Okay, so hi, everyone. Like I said, we have one member is attending remotely, so everything will be a roll call vote tonight. We do have a public hearing starting at 7:15, so I'm going to try and go through the agenda as best we can until we get to that point. And then we'll have to stop for the public hearing. So the first order of business is to receive oral communications from members of the public. Members of the public may address the select board for up to three minutes, longer with the permission of the chairperson. The select board will not engage in discussions on topics raised, and I'm going to rephrase that. The select board shall not engage in discussion on topics raised during public comment, but may choose to add the topic to a future agenda. This agenda segment will be limited to 15 minutes unless extended at the discretion of the chair. Is there any public comment tonight? We're going to move to report, board and committee reports. Report of the chair, I signed the PR 2215 for Julie O'Brien, the VW 2216 for, it was an Amazon order, and VW 2216 from Staples. Grants, gifts, and donations, none. We do have a public hearing, but it's not until 7:15, so we'll come back to that. Under new business, we have business license renewals for 2022. I have Michael and Kate Duffield, DBA Newbury Kayak and Canoe, 291 High Road, general business, sale of kayaks, canoes, and related items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. We have Narrian Patel, DBA BGS Variety, 6D Fruit Street, a common vic jeweler.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. A request for public property use, Ucan Sports, it's a road race, Sunday, June 12, 2022. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion. I had reached out, or I asked Julie to reach out to him in case we had any questions on it, because it wasn't familiar to me. And he got back to us that this is going to be their fifth year doing the 5K race. The 5K starts and finishes in Newbury Port, but travels into Newbury for about a mile in the middle of the race, or at mile one in the middle of the race. The runners are in Newbury for 10 minutes as they turn around and head back to Newbury Port via Scotland Road. The races are pretty small, and they typically see about 200 to 250 participants.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can we just follow up and make sure they know not to spray paint the road in case there's somebody new in charge?
Oh, yes, please.
Yep, I can send him an email.
Thank you. No spray paint and no chalk that doesn't come off.
Also...
I'll send an email.
We had that happen before.
The hours were starting to accumulate.
Oh, yeah, it's a great thing. But also, on Livingston Lane, does anyone, did anyone down there have any problem with the turnaround? Has it always been there? I never remember the turn-
It's five years, yeah.
It's been there. I didn't think the turnaround was there.
Nope. I think there's about a couple of them that have turnaround there. I've seen that streak there before.
Okay, I guess it's like-
And nobody's reached out to us.
Okay, that's good.
So, okay, so any further discussion? Seeing none. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Next, we have a proposed zoning bylaw amendment for spring 2022.
Madam Chair, you have to do the request for the 5K race, too. There was two different ones.
Oh, I jumped right over it. Okay, so I need a request for public property use for the road race. So they have two different road races, Julie?
Right.
Okay, so the first one, the one that we just voted on, was which one?
Was June 12.
Was June 12. I'm sorry, I jumped over.
That's okay.
Request, this is the second one. Request for public property use, Ucan Sports, 5K Road Race, April 10, July 10, and September 11, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Thank you, Julie. Okay, then we have a proposed zoning bylaw amendment for spring 2022 annual town meeting. This is the wireless communications facilities. The planning board has requested to submit a proposed amendment to the planning board for the public hearing in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5. So you all should have seen that bylaw, proposed bylaw, in our packet. I'll entertain a motion. Jeff, do you want to move something?
Yeah, a motion to, the motion that you're looking for is to put on the town meeting, or to discuss it now?
No, to-
Send it to the planning board for public hearing.
Say it again.
Sends it to the planning board for a public hearing.
Was I sleeping then?
[laughing].
Do you want me to explain the process at all? Or are you guys set?
Yeah, and maybe just a little bit of what's there.
Sure.
Why don't I get a motion and a second first? That's okay.
All right. The motion would be for you to be able to have a public hearing on this bylaw.
Right, to submit it back to the planning board for public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion and a second, discussion. Martha, can you explain, please?
Yes, I'll do my best.
And the reason I was so fuzzy on that, I was just thinking of how good my cellphone reception was, so.
Right, I know you're still a little bit-
I was pretending I was my cellphone.
So, under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, any zoning bylaw amendments need to go to the planning board for public hearing before they get placed on the town meeting warrant. The board will make a recommendation at town meeting if the select board ultimately elects to put it on the warrant. In this case, so it's sort of a multi-process step with a lot of deadlines and things that need to be followed. So this is the first, and the planning board did actually vote to set a public hearing date of March 2 for this contingent on your vote to refer it back to the board for public hearing. This particular amendment is one that's been worked on for a while. The board actually started working on it back in 2020, and then everything shut down for COVID. We couldn't hold the public hearings and so on and so forth. So we were working at the time with a consultant, David Maxson, from Isotrop, who got the bylaw up to a certain level, and we wanted to bring that up and bring it to completion. So we've been working with him again. The question to him was whether, you know, there were any changes in technology or other considerations due to more work from home and that kind of stuff that should be incorporated. So this draft represents kind of a second, a second round of amendments. And just, do you want me to go over it just really quickly?
That would be wonderful.
So right now, in our zoning, we have a wireless communications overlay district, which allows cell towers in the Business and Light Industrial District, which goes from the Newbury Port Municipal Boundary down to Boston Road, basically.
Excuse me, Martha, for one second.
Sure.
Jerry, can you hear her?
Um, not, actually, I can, but she's, if she could step closer to the microphone, it would be better.
Okay.
Do you want to maybe turn it around?
How about if I turn, if I turn this around, maybe that will help.
Yeah, although, is that one?
The blue.
That one should be.
Oh, is the blue? The blue is the microphone? Hold on, hold on.
That's the speaker.
Okay, try it again. Yeah, so Martha needs that one. Okay, hold on, we're coming, we're coming, Jerry.
Okay, there we go.
Let's try this now.
Okay, I'll try to speak a little. Is that any better, Jerry?
It's about the same.
Just try it again, just a little bit louder.
Yeah, I'll try to speak more loudly. So anyway, we have a wireless communications overlay district in the Business and Light Industrial District. And what this bylaw is intended to do is to sort of revise some of the regulations for that, but also expand wireless communications to allow, the district is for towers, for the construction of towers, but to allow wireless communications facilities throughout town in other areas. They could be camouflaged in the church steeple, that kind of thing. It's also added a section on small wireless facilities, sort of bringing it up to current technology. There are some, the other thing it does is it suggests currently the zoning board of appeals is the special permit granting authority for wireless. This particular version of the bylaw suggests that it be given over to the planning board because it also can involve site plan reviews, so it's a more sort of efficient process. There are some other companion pieces that will go along with this. I've sent this to town council for her review. But for small cell facilities, if they're going to be located on, say, utility pole in the town's right-of-way, there's also a grant of location, so that would be the select board to grant permission for that. So there are various things that go along with this, but-
Is that a, like, private enhancer cellphone enhancer, or what is?
So those would be not fully-
Something that a homeowner purchases, or is that?
No, no, that would be put by the utility company on the utility poles.
Like a repeater, you mean?
A little different, probably, too.
Yeah, but they are antenna that can be placed, you know, fairly closely together. So with all of these, there should be an improvement in coverage in town. We've also looked at, our consultant did a drive-through to determine where the areas of low coverage and bad coverage are. And so one of the considerations that we would like to do, but not, and we won't be able to do it for this town meeting, is to look at expanding the tower district to handle those gaps in coverage as well. But that will take some outreach and some discussion, so our feeling was to get this on the books, expand the possibilities for coverage, and do that as a second step.
I think it's really good because it takes time for us to do stuff like this and then to be noticed by the carriers, you know, and know that we're ready to do something like this. I mean, I've had a very old phone, and I bought a 13 thinking it would help, and it's worse. So it's got to be the carrier, you know, T-Mobile or whatever, and they're supposed to be great, but I mean, my new phone is worse than my six.
Jeff, I just left T-Mobile because your condition, like your house-
There's nothing up our way.
But also Governor Dunham-
And-
And the Gulf, of course, in that area.
And Palmyra.
And I switched over to Verizon, and-
Well, you got 5G.
Problem's gone.
Yeah.
So, excuse me for one second. We had 7:15, and we have a public hearing at 7:15. I'm just going to finish up this vote, and then we're going to go right to that public hearing.
Thanks, Martha.
So, thank you.
Martha, hold on, Jerry has a question. Jerry?
Just a question on the formatting, on the amendment. The language that's underlined, is that being deleted, or is that being added?
Yeah, the language that's underlined is being added. Things with a strike through are being deleted.
Okay, okay.
And this will come back to us again, Jerry, after the public hearing, when we put it on the warrant.
Okay.
Right, and it will also be reviewed by council.
And this isn't reviewed by council. This is just to get the public hearing scheduled.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? All right, so I need a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
How about a motion? A motion first.
We had a motion and a second, and then we just had discussion.
All right.
And now we're going to have a roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes, that's the one I was sleeping on, Jerry.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
And Alicia Greco, yes. Okay, so now we have a public hearing.
Legal notice?
Yes, we need to, I need to open it first. Hold on, okay, so that's for you, in case I need you to-
Motion, okay.
So I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion, open public hearing, second.
Roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Okay, now I need the clerk to read the public hearing legal notice.
This will be the legal notice, and the Newbury Port News did publish it once Monday, January 24, 2022. In accordance with Chapter 138, Section 12 of the General Laws of Massachusetts, notice is thereby given to the Newbury Select Board acting as a licensed authority of the town of Newbury to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 8, 2022, at 7:15 p.m. at the Newbury Municipal Offices, 12 Kentway Byfield, 01922, for an application for the Plum Island Beach Comma 23 Plum Island, Newbury, Mass., 01951, for the amendment to their alcoholic beverage retail license alteration of premises. Said alteration described as an outdoor seating request.
Thank you. So Julie, has all the green cards been returned?
Yes.
You have the TR sheets from the legal ads, do you have those, too?
Yes.
Okay, so we have everything back to us. Now, we'd like to invite the applicant or the applicant's representative to present the project to us. Project will be what you guys want to do. Come on up. You got to come up, state your name and your address.
Catherine Malsi, for 10th Street, Newbury, Mass. We're just looking to do the outdoor seating that we've been approved with COVID over the last two years. You know, we haven't really had any issues with the outdoor seating, and even last year wasn't even that great of a season. July rained the whole time, and, or when it was hot, people were indoors. But, you know, with the pandemic, we're struggling as it is just to make it. So we're looking to be able to offer the outdoor seating on a permanent basis and not just due to COVID.
Any questions? Do you have any comments?
I think it's a great idea.
No, I'm fine.
Really, it's like, I just, anything that helps these businesses, especially during this period, we'll pull it to you.
Jerry, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Jaya?
No.
Oh, actually, did, was there any communication from any of the butters?
I have one thing in here, I'll read that next. Greg, did you want to come up and speak, or no?
No.
Okay, just ask. So that's a question. So I am going to, we got one correspondence in from a butter on January 29, 2022. We aren't able to attend the meeting, but we are in support of the amendment related to the Beach Comma Restaurant, signed by Stephen and Mary Ann Porter, 20 Plum Island Boulevard, Newbury, Mass. So we have one person in favor of it.
We didn't know if we should have brought the whole crew tonight. We've got lots of them. So I mean, I've talked to most of the butters and all of, like, what is it that you want to do? And we just say we want to just-
Well, let me just say, if they weren't happy about it, they would be here.
Yes.
That's true.
That's what I've learned. So any other, the public, anybody from the public here would like to stand up and speak? Thank you.
I mean, I think, and correct me, guys, if I'm wrong, but you have parking across the street, too, right?
Correct, yes.
So I mean, that's a restaurant that has dedicated parking already, so the spaces that you're going to use are in front of the premise, right next to the door.
Correct.
It's pretty much of a no-brainer.
Are you increasing seats?
We've been shifting seats, you know, in the summertime, like when we were only outdoors, and then, you know, less seats inside. Even now, we didn't really put back all the seats that we took out pre-COVID, just because there isn't the demand, unfortunately.
Right.
So, like I say, we're not really increasing much seats because we're taking stuff all from inside, so.
So, just so everybody understands the process, we need to vote on this, and then it'll go to the ABCC?
Yep.
And if they have any questions or concerns or anything, like what happened before, they'll kick it back to us, so. Any further comment from anyone? Nope. I think we can close the public hearing?
Yep.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. You have to have a motion to approve their request.
Can we, do we approve it outside of the public hearing, though? Do we close the public hearing and then vote, Martha?
Yeah.
That's what I was intending on doing, yeah. So we'll close the public hearing.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
No, we have a motion and a second, so I need a roll call vote, that's all right. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
And Alicia Greco, yes. Okay, so now we can deliberate. Does anybody have any concerns with this? I don't.
No.
Nope. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes.
Congratulations.
That's it? Good luck?
Good luck.
Thank you.
And-
Good luck, guys.
Okay. So...
All right.
Okay, next, we need to vote to set May 10, 2022, for the town election. Voting hours will be 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion made, to set the election date to May 10, 2022.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. We have annual town meeting, we need to vote to have it on April 26 at Newbury Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Old business, I have none. Now for the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Couple of things for tonight. Senator Tarhead has asked that I let you know the town of Newbury will be receiving and may have already received, actually, a grant for $15,493 for ICE rescue. I think that might have been on your last, your last board meeting. We're also getting another $40,000 for firefighter structural gear.
Oh, great.
The turnout gear, so that's great news, thanks to him. The, also had some more great news. We received officially the Plum Island Bathroom waiver. It has been granted, so we are going to be moving forward with that project.
Great.
Segueing into a request for funding, but our ARPA funds, we, some of you may have seen the article in the newspaper recently, there was a little bit of a discrepancy. We have received $2,136,586. In the newspaper, they had also included some of our FEMA money, some of our CARES Act money, and it was confusing because the other communities that were listed was strictly ARPA money. So I'm not sure how that, it might have just been a typo, but, so we, with the issuance of the final rule, which came out a couple of weeks ago, we've received notification that will allow us to really simplify the whole process rather than having to apply in each of the individual categories. Communities that receive this funding can put everything into the, I think they call it revenue loss category, so up to $10 million can go right into the revenue loss category, and we can use it for any legal municipal purpose, basically. Obviously, we've only received 2.1 million, so we're well under that cap. So we can use it for general, any general government services, construction, road building, maintenance, health services, general government administration, public safety, including vehicle purchases and the likes. So, once we, you know, word got out quickly, once that got out that we were able to do that, we looked at some of the proposals that we'll have for this coming fiscal year's operating budget and could shift them into our COVID funding. So the Director of Public Health has requested $290,375 be encumbered for PP&amp;E, contact tracing, et cetera, all of the public health expenses that we would incur throughout the life of the grant. So I would ask for-
Say that again.
And those are for COVID-related expenses, right?
All COVID-related expenses, and if they don't expend them fully, they're still available for us to use as long as they're committed by December 31, 2024, and expended by December 31, 2026.
Okay, so they just want to encumber this amount?
Yep, they want to encumber this amount. That's what they budgeted for the next four years.
So I guess, do you want us to take a vote, one at a time?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'm going to request a vote that we encumber $290,000. What was the number, Michael?
$375, I think.
$290,375,000 for public health.
For public health out of our ARPA funds.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I'll move that, so-
I'll second that.
And Michael's second it. Okay, I need a roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
J.R. Colby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. Okay.
And then the DPW Director has requested $200,000 for the completion of the Plum Island Bathroom Project. That is to include plumbing, electrical, ductless heat and AC, roof install, epoxy floors, sheet rock, helical piles, insulation, signage, security cameras, and other materials and
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve $200,000 for the Plum Island Bathrooms, we have a fund.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So this is coming out of the $2 million now?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
All of this is coming out of that?
Okay, okay.
All of these requests would come from ARPA funding.
Okay, okay, all right.
And this is solely for the Plum Island bathroom, right?
This one is, yeah. Not the 390 that we just voted on. That was for public health.
Right, right.
Okay.
290.
290.
290, sorry.
Do you have a second?
We have a second. And we had discussion. Roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jay Alkoby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco? Yes. Okay, next, Tracy.
The police chief is requesting $42,000 for the replacement of the 2014 administrative cruiser, and $30,000 for the replacement of the 2009 Ford F-250 shellfish constable patrol vehicle. And I should have mentioned to you all before that these have all been approved by the capital planning committee already in their deliberations.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the two vehicles as mentioned. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Jerry?
Why do we need two police, are they cruisers?
One cruiser, one constable, fish constable truck.
Shellfish constable truck.
Which is a pickup truck.
And these were already scheduled on the capital planning.
Correct.
They've already been scheduled through capital planning. We have a schedule so that we replace our assets. And this is just kind of, I guess, using COVID.
So we're replacing an old, older vehicle?
Correct.
A 2000, and just so, a 2009 Ford F-250 will be replaced with a 2021 F-150, and the 2014 cruiser will be replaced with 2021 as well. 2021. Did you hear that, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay.
And what is the total amount? Who are you looking for?
$72,000 for both.
$72,000, $72,000 for both. Okay. Any further discussion or questions?
John, do we have them? I mean, well, it's going to be.
I'd wait for after this meeting.
No, but I'm just saying, with the chip shot, it's, we'll be lucky to get them.
That's, that's why we're still looking at 21 as well.
Yeah, Holy Mack, oh, yeah.
Okay, Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Yes. Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jay Alkoby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Governor Baker has filed his budget on January 26. I don't know if any of you have seen it. Appropriations in the proposal total a little over $48 billion, $48 billion, which is about a 2.6% increase over the previous years. Sadly, it did not include any increase for Chapter 90 funding, which we were all a little disappointed about. So that number remains flat back to 2012. So there hasn't been any increase since then.
Is he coming in out with a supplemental budget, though, for that?
I.
Nobody knows yet.
Nobody knows. We kind of thought it would be here, but I certainly hope so. Maybe they'll use state COVID-related funding, ARPA funding. I don't know. So the House will take that up in April.
Okay.
But we are seeing a slight increase in our cherry sheet revenues. And the nearshore placement of sand from the Piscatac River, I think you probably all know that that's been underway for a little bit. We've already received about 60,000 cubic yards of sand. And we did recently, this past week or last week, I had to request that our time of year restriction on our permit be amended, I guess is the appropriate language. So we, and Jeff, you probably helped me out on this, but basically, the Army Corps of Engineers permit is going to go through April 15, but ours was restricted as of March 15 because of certain fish that are active at that time. I'm not sure exactly which ones, but.
So they can't dump sand, then?
What's that?
So they can't dump sand, then?
If anything, it could be the sturgeon or something else.
Yeah, yeah. So, so we requested, I guess, an amendment to our permit, so more to come on that. But basically, this will allow us to continue during the time that the Army Corps of Engineers is doing their work.
With the Piscatac, a lot of it is weather-related.
Exactly.
And some of it is, you know, the storms need to move around some of the sediment that's been deposited already because we're starting to get higher for the scows to get across.
Right.
So are they seeing, are you seeing it break out?
Oh, gosh, yeah. Oh, man, there's big difference.
Good, so that's moving forward, and that's it?
And that's it? All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to correspondence, we received a letter from Xfinity. Dear Chairman and members of the Board, as part of our ongoing commitment to keep you and our customers informed about changes to Xfinity TV services, we wanted to update you that on March 22, 2022, the following channel changes will occur. Afro will only be available in HD. Afro HD will move from digital preferred to expanded basic, and entertainment remaining on Channel 1623. Kids' Street HD will be added to expanded basic and kids and family, Channel 1772. HD channels require HD technology, fee, and X1 TV box or compatible customer-owned device. Customers are receiving notices of this information in their bill. Please feel free to contact me, who is Patrick Sharns at Comcast.net, should you have any questions. We also received some letters from the Mass Fish Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, dated the 28th and 31st, regards to, and a notice from Division of Marine Fisheries on January 26, notice to shellfish restrictions.
Closures, yep.
Closures. We have an MBTA proposed fare change as well. So this, I think they're looking for a public hearing. They have scheduled a public hearing. I just didn't get my sticky note on this one. Yeah. So the changes. Yeah, so they're proposing, the 2022 proposed fare changes. We're introducing changes that aim to improve equity by expanding our products for reduced fare riders and simplify tariff rules. Changes include a permanent five-day flex passes on commuter rails, lower pricing for one-day link passes, a new seven-day link pass for reduced fare riders, expanding reduced fare monthly passes to all modes, second transfers on bus and subway, and transfers between express buses. If approved, these changes will go into effect July 1, 2022. For more information about the changes, please visit the website at www.nbta.com/fares2022 proposed fare changes. They are collecting public feedback to understand how these changes will affect riders. Your comments can help us ensure these new fare policies will benefit you. You can submit comments until March 3, 2022, to publicengagement@mbta.com. To share more information about these fare changes and hear feedback from our riders, they'll be holding two public hearings on Thursday, February 10, and February 17 at 6:00 PM. You can register for the meetings. The town can provide you a link if you're interested. Reach out to Julie, and that's what's going to happen with the team, so they're having a public hearing.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If the police chief is still there, could we have an update on the COVID numbers for the town?
Sure. John, do you have an update for us?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So we're still doing very, very well, as I think a lot of areas are. The current numbers now that we're looking at, this is the last report from Mass DPH, we have 53 new cases in that period of January 13 to February 4. So those are pretty good numbers. Overall, in the state, I actually, I've been looking at the state, this is a general idea, not just focusing on Newbury lately. And as far as new, in that same period, new cases in the state, there's only been, of the whole entire population of the state, a little bit more than a half a percent of the populace has, you know, has generated new cases. So that's remarkable to me. I think, I think we're definitely, everybody, not just Newbury, everything's trending in a very, very good direction. So that would be my report at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're going in the right direction, Jerry.
Okay.
Thank God. The town lifted the mask mandate as of today as well. There's no more mask mandate. That's why I'm not wearing a mask. We have any meeting updates?
I just went to the webinar on the Mass Municipal Law. Highly recommend everyone watch it. It was an hour well spent.
Did they record it?
They recorded it, yeah. It's on the website. And they're doing another one on cybersecurity this week, too, this week or next week. Maybe it's next week, next week, yeah. But it was like, it was supposed to be done at the MMA convention. It wasn't, but it was, it was well done. They did a nice job.
They do a nice job, I think.
They do a nice job.
Yeah.
Lot of good, lot of good information. I highly recommend the board to watch it.
Thank you. I went to the District Communication Committee meeting with Mike. Mike was there. And they're just going through their budgeting process. They're listening to, you know, all their schools are coming back with what they want, and process is going. Did they give you a number yet, Tracy? Do you know?
No, I don't have anything formal.
Yeah, I think it's coming in March, right? We get the number from them. So Jeff, do you have anything to add? Tia? Nothing? Okay, we have meeting minutes. Can we approve draft meeting minutes of January 25, 2022?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jay Alkoby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco? Yes. We have warrants.
Motion to sign warrants.
Second.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jay Alkoby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco? Yes. There's no executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Roll call vote. Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jerry Heavey? Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jay Alkoby?
Yes.
Alicia Greco? Yes. And Jerry, you don't have to come down to sign.